Good evening, June, are you there? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mary. Can you hear me?
Sure can, thank you. We'll be getting started here in a minute. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get the council study session. For Tuesday, October fourteenth, started for twenty twenty five at six P M. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go on to old business. A discussion on the approval resolution number twenty twenty five dash twenty five, an interlock agreement for library services and premises. Between the city of Mapton and the Yakima County Rural Library District openings as the Yakima Valley Libraries and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement. So, B. If you want a discussion on. On that. Guys. On the library. Yeah, me and explain. Okay, so we. We did the counter like they all wanted and they accepted. The amount of. Sixty eight thousand one hundred and twenty with forty six cents to be in two installments. Okay, it's always your something in it. Okay, so they went ahead and agreed to do that. And that would be just for the following year of twenty twenty six. So.
Did they say anything would continue or are they gonna go back to the hundred and something?
We just, we just discussed this. June, do you wanna fill us in on that, please?
So, so the terms of the agreement is a one-year agreement and so. The Yakima Valley Library Services are not, at this moment in time, agreeing to anything beyond the end of twenty twenty six and so. You know, throughout the year, there's gonna have to be a conversation about what, what Yakima Valley. It plans on do longer term if they are going to want to continue to work with the city to. To share the cost to keep a physical location open or if they want, or if they revert back to, you know, their original position. Earlier, you know, or I should say last month where the only options they were willing to give you were. Closing down the physical location and then utilizing a bookmobile and basically telling the city. If to reopen a physical location, the city would have to take on, take on all the costs. If, if, if. If Y V L decides to go that way, you know, a conversation's gonna probably be had. I know there were some conversations about potentially reviewing levy lids, which is a. Long drawn out process that wouldn't be, where we wouldn't be able to see revenue coming in until twenty twenty seven if we saw that to its completion. But that may be part of the ongoing conversation. So. By and large, we should view this as another year extension on the life of the library and the what happens next is still open-ended.
Questions, Diane? Sophie?
Yes, what, what does everybody think? Should we do this for one year and then cancel it out? So that just depends on this. Do you have any questions?
My question? Well, no, I just kinda wanna get everybody's input before I come back.
Yes, are we gonna stay open? Are we gonna stay open with this?
So we're gonna go ahead. If it could be up to y'all, if you wanna stay with the one year. Okay, so that's gonna be up to council. I know we did talk to the school as well. And. I think if the, the library's gonna work with us for one year, that'd be great because talking to the school. It would just be a couple of hours a day and it would only be, if I remember correctly, just for students.
Just for students.
It wouldn't be open to the general public. So you'll need to think of what you wanna do if you all want it for the. You know, one year and then maybe work something out. And budget it for the following year and then we can still look to see if there's any grants out there. You know, in twenty twenty six to go on in twenty twenty seven.
I see Mapton needs a library here. I know when, back in the day. That library was used quite a bit by students, by parents, by the whole city of residents of Mapton, to tell you the truth.
That was back in the day. What do they actually do now? I've been in there. I don't go in there often. I don't have kids, but all I see is kids on computers. They're not reading the books. Anymore like the, we used to back in our day. Just on a computer. I mean, face, social media.
So. I know Mary's always talking about back in the day and I agree with her, but I have gone in there, we've gone in there. And there's kids and that place is full. And I've gone in there even by myself just to see if the librarian needs anything, because she does do a lot of stuff with the kids.
Probably just more on. Crafts and stuff, right?
If she does crafts, but yeah.
Only Wendy Elite, yeah.
And so I think. The library would be great if we could keep it open another year. And, you know, find out down the road what we can do, you know, finding grants. You know, are putting it on the. Making it up and putting it as, you know, on the ballot for levy.
It sounds like they didn't wanna do that at all. They just wanted to be really complete. I guess there's a negotiation that you'll have to do throughout this year to see if we've completed on the, if we can.
If they're willing to.
Work with certain dollar amounts, we can put it on the record.
And then if not, then come twenty twenty six, we can work to see if we're able to put it in the budget. And maybe by then there may be a library grant or some kind of money, you know. And even if we have to get a grant that we can match that, that's, you know, that's a start. But I think right now for this whole year, let's. Keep the library for twenty twenty six and that'd be something a working artist with that we'd have to do for the following years to come. I think. To see if we can get a grant or, you know, work it into the, to the budget for twenty twenty seven. Um, twenty twenty seven.
And then put it out there for the citizens, you know, if you wanna keep this, pass a levy for it to help paper it.
You also do a survey and see how much it is used in my age groups.
What do they do when they're in there? They just?
Yeah, in this.
Facebook or are they actually checking out books and doing homework on the computers type thing?
Well, I mean, and even if they're on the computer, it's still something that they're there.
They're using it. They have somewhere to go to do it. Yeah. They might not have anywhere to go to do things, so that's why they got a library to do it.
So, and I mean, I think those of us that have kids or have. Multiple kids like myself, my kids use that library. My grand, my granddaughters, they use that library all the time right now, you know, so. I think I hate to see it closed. Because what are the kids gonna do? Not just my kids, but all our kids here in Mapton in general, you know, I'll go back to say it again. You know, the spring will be here, summer will be here and we will have kids just roaming the streets because there'll be no library and there'll be no splash pad. So our kids will be suffering big time. And I think the sergeant can agree with me on that.
Hundred percent on that just because of the fact is that. That busy hands, you know, they're gonna be busy doing something. Either they're gonna be busy doing in the library, they might be on a computer. Like I say. I'd rather have them busy in the computer or busy tagging out here. You know, I'd rather see them tag, busy on a computer and they're in the library than getting out here involved in other things that. Then we're having to arrest kids and, you know, it just becomes a big deal. Kids do need somewhere to go. So. Personally, it's a great thing to have them a library so that they can, these kids can have somewhere to go.
And I think that it may be the smaller kids using the library and I think it's good that they're all using it because they will grow up there. I know Janelle's pretty good about educating the kids as well, you know, showing them the things that can be utilized in the library. You know, it's not just books. There's electronic books is my understanding in there as well and, you know, she does arts and crafts on Wednesday. But I believe all libraries do that one day a week. I'm not sure if they all do it on the same day, but I know that. The libraries throughout the valley all have one day of some kinds of arts and crafts.
And to touch a little bit more on the library thing and computers, it was about nature. I've been working with Elise, a superintendent. And we're scheduled next month, I'm gonna have a Yakima County Deputy Detective come in and do a presentation. For the middle, high school and elementary students on the use of the internets and problems and things like that. I've been working with that so we can set up a presentation. An assembly basically to all the kids and parents and stuff like that. So as of right now, it's scheduled for November. Can't remember exactly the date, but it is for November. Just like that, kids don't know what the internet also has. Which they have access to in the library.
Thank you for that, Sarge. So Diane, what are your thoughts?
No, I agree with like I said right now that we should keep it for the year and see if we can get rent to keep it open for the following year. But we do need to keep it open for the kids. Like you said, it's really important for them to never have anything else to do.
Sophie?
I agree, we need to keep it open.
So, okay, we're gonna go ahead.
Just one more question for the financial person. Do we have enough money to budget it in for next year, the sixty eight?
It might take some finesse to move money around because that's a lot more than we paid last year.
And that's on top of what we already do, right? Like the utilities and.
They already pay us.
Yeah. And the good thing is they're giving us two installments. You know, we don't have to pay it all in one lump sum, so. That's, that's good. You know, we put more into the city, you know, our sprinkler system and our, you know, parks and stuff, so. This is for something good for the, for the kids. All right, we're gonna go ahead and go on. To three, new business. We're gonna have Spectrum presentation. Yep, so if you'd like to just step up and to the podium. And you'll probably. You wanna? Yeah.
I like the idea of keeping the library open too. I think kids in there using the computer at the library probably because they don't have computers at home too sometimes. So I do see that quite a bit. So. With that, are you gonna have anything from your display or am I just gonna kinda talk through it? I think I can talk through it, honestly. I do, but I, like I said, I don't know if I necessarily need to, like, this is kinda still preliminary. We're, we're working through it, get closer and I didn't. So let me introduce myself. I'm Wade Revan. I'm with Spectrum Business. I'm sure you guys are familiar, familiar with us. We provide. Internet phone services, cable TV services here in Mapton. And I have a couple extra technical folks if we do have quite technical questions regarding our services. This is David and Lazaro. And so I was working with Rachel a while back with your guys' phone system, especially at City Hall and throughout City of Mapton. It's not. The phone services and the phone system haven't been working as desired. So I had Rachel send me some invoices a while back on what you're spending with your current provider, which they believe is centrally. And I gathered that information and then put together a kind of compare before services and after services and what the cost would be. And I believe it'll be a decent cost savings to the city, city monthly cost savings. The service I've been proposing is, is a, is a hosted voice service. So that's a, an internet-based phone service. It would, would use the same infrastructure that you use today for your computers. I, I, it would come with new handsets. And because it's a hosted voice service, it comes with all the bells and whistles. So you get voicemail, you know, text, text to email. Essentially about anything you want, portal access to go in there, make changes if you want to. I also worked with Dalton from Vision. To ensure that the new phone system that we're proposing would work with your current infrastructure and he did verify that it would. And on, on top of that, he said that he would help implement it for the city at, at no cost as well. So, so essentially I can get into more detail and more specifics if you want, essentially from, from the research that I've done for the city of Mapton. It would be a decent cost saves. I still need a little more. Due diligence with Rachel in the city of Mapton just to verify some of the, some of the phone numbers. That you, you know, are some of the phone services to verify if you need it or not, especially at the wastewater treatment plant. You have one light item on the bill. That's, I guess, kinda unusual, so I need to work with a little more to make sure that's correct, but once I have a little bit more information from you, you folks, I could give a solid. You know, final, final number. You guys have any questions initially or?
Yeah, is this for, is this great for internet and landlines?
This would just be for phone services itself, just a voice. Landlines is an interesting way to put it. So this, this would be, it would. I guess probably in your view, appear to be a landline, but it's actually a, a phone service that's over the internet. So I think it's a hosted voice phone service. So I'm, I'm not including internet, in a internet pricing at this point because I believe you guys get internet through the county for free. And I, I think you also get internet from a local, like wireless internet provider that I think they have some equipment on one of your towers or one of your buildings and stuff like that. So. So internet would not be in you guys' interest for now from us, but this, so this would be just replacing the phone system. And phone services. It does include hardware, so the physical phones themselves and the service itself too.
Is that for cell phones or is that just the office phones?
So it will be just office phones, but you could download the app to your cell phone if you wanted to. It comes with an app to download your cell phone. And that could be downloaded on a, I don't know if you wanna do it to a personal cell phone, but could be.
No. Not at all.
Only put to the work phones, yes.
Well, i- if you have work cell phones, you could do that for sure. Yeah, absolutely. And the next thing about it is because it is a hosted, so a kind of an internet, internet-based phone system. You can access it, that phone system from anywhere. So say you did bring laptops home. I don't know if you folks do. That are associated with the city. You could even, you know, work from home, say you were sick or, you know, you wanted to work from home for whatever reason that day. Say your kids are sick. If you had a laptop, you'd actually have a soft phone on your laptop and you could even look like you're working from. From work, but because you're working from home. Also comes with some collaboration tools. So I don't know if you guys, do you guys do any collaboration tools between departments at all? Like is the messaging?
Oh, yeah, we do that, but in county, it's a messaging.
Okay, you do have some like that. Okay, the phone system does invented have a service like that as well. But the long story short is it would be a cost savings. I do need to gather a little more information as far as. A couple of phone numbers and what their service is doing exactly. And it would improve. The, the phone, your phone capability today, because Rachel says like you have a lot of problems at City Hall with.
We get people that, like, we've been calling and calling and nobody's at the city. No, I make sure I call and I'm like, hey, what's going on? They're like, Mayor, we've been here. So we do have one line that we do have problems with and I believe we, the other line is one that just staticky, if I'm correct, Muddy? Yes. So if it's not one line, it's the other. So one will ring what it wants to and the other one you pick up and just a lot of static and we have to take their phone number and call them back off the other line.
Gotcha.
So would, would that fix the problem?
Yes, yeah, and I verify with Dalton on that too, because where that staticky line can be coming from is a couple of different things. It could be the infrastructure coming in. Into the, you know, one of your buildings, the actual lines being delivered could have some problems, could be your internal wiring having problems. This would replace both because we would, we would have our own infrastructure. Or we would use your internet access, which you know is working well today, and then we would use the lines that are feeding your computers today rather than the old. Analog infrastructure you're using to feed your phones today. You literally take. The line that's feeding your computer and you take that, put it into your phone and then from your phone to your computer. So you're using a new line that you know is good and working.
So it's gonna save the city some?
Yeah, I estimated around, depending on that last line, it's gonna save you guys around three to four hundred fifty bucks, something like that, a month. Today you pay, you pay eight. How do we, you pay eight seventy four, forty five before taxes. And the proposal I put in front of Rachel would have been. Four, four eleven a month. But like I said, there, there's some, I still. It's very common. David, are you aware of any cities, is it Seaside?
Yeah, city of Seaside in Oregon.
Seaside in Oregon?
Yeah, they, the whole fire department, police department, city hall, everybody's on it, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's really. It's not if, it's, you know, it's when. Then everybody's gonna move to this type of stuff because the, the infrastructure you guys using today for your phone system is. I mean, how long is, how long is centrally kept those copper lines in the ground? Seventy, eighty, who knows how long, you know, very long time. So it's failing. So and, and they're really not wanting to, I don't wanna speak on their behalf, but in general. Phone companies with the old infrastructure are really not wanting to sustain that much longer anyways, so everybody is kinda moving off to a, to a hosted type platform.
Questions, Diane?
Anybody here in the Yakima Valley is using your?
I don't think so right now. It, it's cities especially starting to, are slowly starting, I thought, just in general. Yakima Nation uses, is that for some of their locations. I have tried. Should have brought some examples. Yeah, there are other companies in this area.
Local.
Yes, that are local using this. I could give you some of those references. You'd be the first city in the valley, you know, just because. I guess cities are probably slow adopters typically. They don't, it's not broke, don't fix it kind of mentality. So, but that's changing. They stopped. Yeah, due to like economic reasons and for failing infrastructure, that's starting to happen.
All right.
That is.
We don't have any questions for you.
Okay, awesome.
Okay. Well, you're back for me and to get more numbers to you.
Okay, do you want us to stick around or?
Sure. Okay.
Well, thanks for the time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, you know, I'll, I'll continue to work with Rachel to get those numbers solidified. I do think it'll be a good solution for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you.
Move on to B, discussion on approval resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty six approving the email hosting service from Vision Municipal Solutions. On page thirty eight. Thank you. I'll have a. Thank you. Testing. Testing. All right. Out, out. Yeah, my agreement's on that. Okay, so. Okay, um, so. You all have any. Any questions on, on this one?
Yeah, we've been about.
So. The services from municipal, um. Vision Municipal Solutions, if you go onto page thirty eight.
For the new emails you guys were talking about.
There is a. An annual fee on there, so it's seven thousand two hundred and ten. Sixty nine plus the four thousand two hundred and ninety nine and forty seven cents an annual that's included tax. So, Muddy, you wanna fill us in on this?
It just depends on how many licenses we have. So if you look at the quote on thirty eight. If we were to get twenty five with. Twenty five emails with all the Microsoft licensing, that's the total price. It would be one seventy nine per person. I used to twenty five. But we, yeah, we probably have maybe eight to ten. No, probably the officers are slow. How about?
Nineteen.
Nineteen, so it'd be about nineteen, not twenty five. And then if we just needed emails, services for council members. I think it's about ninety four, so just depending on our council members or fire department.
That number for the council and Luke.
So we did, okay, so it's nineteen for everybody, including the council, a fire department and staff.
So on this, Muddy, when we say fire department, it's just Luke, it wouldn't be every, okay. Thank you. Just to clear, with clarification.
So yeah, it would be, I was playing with the numbers there, rather shoot a higher number than a lower one, so it's. One would be ninety. For the email with Microsoft licensing, like I said, which would only be about ten people that really need that and then. The ninth other, just the ninety four dollars, which is the email.
Let's just go see, email doesn't have the three annual three hundred sixty, so that's for computers. You guys don't have computers at work.
Right, so those that need that Microsoft.
That would need that, yeah. And that includes your, your emails.
Yeah.
So the ten over here are just for the ones who just get the emails. Or you need an email, send an email.
No, just the one that just need email, council members.
Send an email.
Yes. Yes, yeah, yes, it's good.
Is it less what we have now or are we getting away from the county?
The county, the county is getting away from us, from all cities. Actually, they're picking everybody up.
Any questions, Diane?
And we would have the option to make our email order as well.
Oh, yes. Mary, do you have any questions?
No.
No? Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and move on. To see discussion of ordinance, uh, number twenty twenty-five dash twelve hundred and ordinance of the city of Mapton, Washington, adopting chapter fifteen point zero five of the Mapton Municipal Code. Uh, adoption of building codes by reference, adopting the international building code, international residential code, interdash, international property maintenance code. And international fire code by reference, providing for, for severity, providing for corrections and establishing an effective date. And Drew, you wanna fill us in on this, please?
Yes, so good evening, everyone. The genesis of this, of this ordinance is to deal with. A problem that of nuisance properties within the town and specifically, uh, the mayor and the staff have identified. Four properties, uh, one of which is a, is a property that is mostly um, been brought down. It's my understanding that it. That uh, a car may have run into the structure itself. And so most of it's in this kind of half destroyed state. And then we have. Three other homes, two of which appear to be fully that abandoned and vacant, but um, possibly dangerous, possibly, you know, allowing. Uh, uh, individuals getting into the property and being an unsafe structure. And the primary, when we're viewing your codes, it became very clear to me that. The uh, the city did not have. The enforcement mechanisms, the, the codes on its, on its books in, to be able to enforce. Uh, against these nuisance properties and basically try to make these owners uh. Do something about these properties. And if the owner's not being able to do something about these properties, then turning around and allowing uh. The city to do something about it, to declare it a public nuisance, to bring a lawsuit if it wants, if it wants to take that route to. Force them to abate the nuisance, that's the lawyer, legalese term for it, or to do what's called summary abatement, which is for the city to take it upon himself to. Take whatever action it needs to take, that needs to be done in order to fix the problem. The reason why we decided to go with this route specifically to address it is that a lot of this ish of the gap. It is something that is primarily addressed to the state building code and the state building code and many of the cities, uh, a- as a result. Adopted these internationally modeled ordinances, the international residential code. The IPMC, the IFC, and the IB, IBC. They, these are usually adopted by reference, which is exactly what we're doing here. And basically, these are maintained by the International Code Council and. Fundamentally, what they do is, is that they are codes for maintaining the safety of structures. And. The reason why we have these four is that while they all more or less overlap on each other, they all kind of also address different things. So for example, the international residential code is. Is primarily. Uh, something that applies to residences, but it doesn't necessarily apply to commercial or industrial properties. So then you have the international building code or the international. Property maintenance code that uh, that, that, you know, will have. Similar language. It's not always a hundred percent identical across the board in terms of what thing, what each and every code provision would say. But basically, they all operate on the idea of you cannot, among other things, you cannot uh, maintain an unsafe structure. You can't have a structure that is, you know, potentially. You know, oh, that will potentially fall down and you haven't done something to secure it to ensure that so, nobody goes in and gets potentially harmed by. By the sudden collapse of that structure. So that's part of this. The other piece of this is, is, is. Your code enforcement process is decentralized at this moment. What that means is, is that. You have code enforcement, for example, in titles, in your title seven seventeen. In the zoning code for specific violations for your development regulations or your development use. But you don't necessarily have a set of code enforcement regulations that says what you do if. You have an unsafe structure, which makes sense if you immediately. Run into the problem of we don't have a code provision that protects, that says, this is what we do when we have an unsafe structure. And so. Part of the ordinance is building in that enforcement mechanism. Permits the mayor or the mayor of state disease, doesn't need to issue what's called a notice of violation. This is. The same tool that you use for, for violations of your zoning code. It's kind of. Designed to track that, which is pretty common in this situation when we're talking about buildings and structures. We try to kind of treat, treat like for like in that situation where, for, if we're already dealing with buildings and structures and things that we would be dealing with. And say the permitting side will also deal with it in the same, in the same vein on the code enforcement side, particularly in, in our situation. But, you know, fundamentally, this is a, by adopting these codes, this gives the town the immediate set of tools, in my opinion. To deal with these four nuisance properties. It's, I, 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 and the mayor already knows this. It's not the only thing that I think needs to change. That's for a longer conversation, I think, that, that the mayor and I are gonna have, are gonna be starting and then potentially involving the council after that. But this is, in my opinion, what is a good first step to not only address the immediate problems that, that with these four properties, but it's then also tools that can be used. For other similarly situated properties within the, within the town. And I invite the council for any questions they have for me.
Diane?
This is the stuff we talked about at the last meeting, correct?
Yes, that, we did have a conversation specifically. We, it might have not been specifically about these building, these specific codes. I think at the last meeting, I said I needed to study your, your city, your, you know. Municipal code before I had an answer and a set of solutions. And it was through that process that I've, that I've now bringing this back to you to say, I think that this. You need to do this in order to address this problem.
So this will still be like, um, like we talked about last, it's still gonna be in order of getting a hold of the owners. Not just going out and sending our people to go do it and then try to collect later on.
Correct. So, so it's always, it's always best to try to get the owners to comply. It is simpler from a, like, just a process standpoint, but it's also to avoid. Having any municipality spend the money in order to fix the, to fix the problem. However. If at the end of the day, the, the uh. Owner is either unwilling or unable to fix the issue, then the city has to, has to ask itself, is it going to utilize its power? To, to summarily abate a problem, which does mean at that point, using its resources and using its people.
And like, so we try to work with them first and they're trying, but not, this doesn't give. A certain person like the mayor or the designated person. The ability to just go and do something because they want to go do it. It'll still have to go through a process.
It would still have to go through a process, you know, it, it gives the mayor the authority. To declare a public nuisance if, if the violations are not corrected. And, and there are some provisions in these codes that if there is an immediate. Danger to, to life and property, like where, where if, if the issue is not dealt with, say in like twenty-four hours, let's just say there was some. Issue at a property. I don't know. Let's just say it was a gas leak, because I, I think that's an easy thing to think about. That, that it allows the city in an emergency situation, the authority, the ability to go in and fix the problem. But, you know, in, in a situation like that, right, the, 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 the primary issue is you don't want a. A, a issue becoming much larger problem that could potentially harm people in the town versus, versus something like, say, I, I, I'm thinking about the. You know. The property that I'm aware of that's basically half fallen down. That property, you know, has the capacity to continue to fall and deteriorate. But there isn't anything that would suggest at this moment that if unless somebody takes action, say in the next twenty-four hours, that. You know, a bunch of people are gonna be harmed because a portion of that, of that home is gonna fall. So that's, that's kind of the differences that, that, that play here.
Thank you. Any questions, Mary?
No.
Yeah. No questions? Drew. So I could get any question? Thank you for that, George.
I, I, if I, if I may, Mary, just for, for just a moment, I do wanna shout out, uh, folks might notice that I have a colleague on the call. This is, her name is Mag Lorraine. Mag is our newest associate. At Octa Murphy Wallace, she actually just passed the bar this past September, which we're all very excited about. She's here to learn and to study kind of being a municipal lawyer, but she also helped in the um. Drafting of this uh, ordinance. So I wanted to make sure you all were aware and got to say hi to her, so.
Thank you, May. You did a good job.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me and allowing me to sit in. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. You have any questions for her? Anybody? Okay. We're gonna go ahead and move on. If you don't have anything more, Drew, to add. Okay. I go ahead and go on to D. Uh, discussion and direction regarding the preliminary budget. So, um, you have your books. You know, if you have all had a chance to look at them, um, I know Sophie added some. Numbers and pages to it.
Sophie, for, for those of you who turned, um, your binders, then I added them in there for you in your binder. And then I think Madi said she added, copied uh, in your packets. Uh, so this is what's. This is just a projection for twenty twenty-six. It includes just a five percent increase from the budget of twenty twenty-five. Um, this is all preliminary. Uh, we did go through and just reach, research on some of the revenues that you guys had questions on. Um, those are being fixed. Uh. We are still working on a couple of other items. Uh, in the expenditure report. Uh. That we know are, are an issue, but that is a bigger web to untangle. Uh, and we're hoping that by next week, we should have it all done and ready to go. Uh, and, and have it a little more, a little cleaner than we. Than what it looks like now. As far as expenditures.
Did y'all get a chance to look at the numbers? Um, especially of the ones that you guys had questions about at the last meeting. I know there was um, questions on administration penalties and fees, mayor, um. See. What was a few of those?
A little bit different than the ones we had in the book. It is a starkly same.
Right, because this is just an estimated summary versus what we've actually. The other one was just what we spent. Um, the revenue, what for the, for the period. Um, what the budget was and the percentage. This is actually showing you. What the budget was for twenty twenty-four, what we actually spent in twenty twenty-four, what the budget was for twenty twenty-five, what we have spent so far in twenty twenty-five. And then the projected uh.
Budget.
Budget for twenty twenty-six. So this is giving you a three-year look back or a two-year look back with twenty twenty-six being. And this does include, this doesn't include any uh, property tax increases or levies. This is just the five percent increase um, across the board.
Any questions?
Since I'm, I'm just, just, since I'm the one that didn't return it, and do I just replace it's one for the way, the way it says on there?
Uh, what I did was, I, what I did for everybody else is just so you have the history of what we, we did is just put it right on top.
Oh, okay.
Put your revenue just right on top of the other pages and then your expenditures as well.
There's something in the event you wanna ask, um, Sophie or Madi? Feel free to ask. Okay, Diane, do you have any questions? Sophie? Mary?
No, right now.
Yep. And feel free to uh, give the girls a call, call Sophie if you all have any questions. And or if you wanna come in and meet with her, you guys can set up an appointment um, to come in and talk to her about it. If you see something on there that you um, maybe not happy with or you wanna still question. Okay? So with that, we're gonna go on to E, um, and. Sophie will go ahead and discuss that. This is the discussion of the communities and school.
What's E?
Um, yeah, the discussion of the communities and the school. I think we kind of went over that a little bit at the beginning. So, um, we had a meeting with the school, so, um. Sophie.
We found the regular council meeting agenda. I am pleased for new business. We talked about this discussion, but we have talked about it in the meeting, yeah.
Yeah, so just mark it as E under new business on, um.
Right.
Right. Or, uh. Right, okay.
So we met with the, we met with. Uh. The superintendent of Mapton School District, uh. They are, were looking for a facility we would pay for as a learning center. Uh, previously, they indicated that we could have, possibly have it open for longer hours and allow other people in there. Uh, this last meeting last week, they said, no, it would only be open maybe from four to six. They would staff it and it would slowly be for. Um, school age children. Uh, they also previously mentioned maybe, um. Doing uh, a shared cost or taking over the whole cost if they could afford it in their uh. Grant. To do the mobile van at least, if that's what, what we were looking for. And, uh. And then they did not. Uh, they did not get the budget for that. They were gonna look around for other uh, grants that might cover maybe half of it. Uh, half of the thirty-eight for the mobile van. They were not, they did not feel confident that they could get the full amount. Uh, but I think it's, it was evident this earlier, uh, at the beginning of the. Study session that we want to, uh. Move forward with keeping it open. Keeping the library open. For all residents, not just, not just students.
So that's just our update from the meeting that we have with the school districts, um, last week. Have they done a survey to see how many uh, adults go in there to use the line, Mary?
Um, I don't believe that the library has done a survey for that, but I bet, I believe that. Uh, the librarian may have that number already, just because she's the only one here. So she's gotta see them coming in and out. And get, maybe get a more accurate number of how many people actually use the library.
Because Vera mentioned about maybe doing a survey this whole year that we're gonna be using again and. Get how many kids go in, what they're actually using in there and adults, I guess.
I'll go from there. Because, I mean, the sixty-eight that they're asking for, for twenty twenty-six. Is only for twenty twenty-six. They're going to expect us to pay more in twenty twenty-seven.
So it wasn't thirty, the thirty-two or eight, thirty-eight thousand that's been out there on social media?
Well, that's only for the mobile one.
That's for the mobile.
Just for the mobile. Just for the mobile, just for the mobile.
It does not, that is not the actual building, they want to shut the actual building down.
So, um, you know, just to clear things up, you know, um. That was just for the mobile unit, and that is only two days a week, and it's not a guarantee. So I think if we did the whole year, that'd be great at this price. And then, like I said, we'll find something, you know, future. So. That was the update. That we could give, or Sophie could gift. From the meeting last week, okay? Any questions, Diane?
No.
Sophie?
Okay. No.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six forty-seven.